Five thirty and calling the study session to order. One of my, what topic near and dear to my heart, electric vehicles. All yours, Mr. Goldie.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Wheel, City Council. We are happy to be in front of you tonight to talk about sustainability in our operations and more specifically fleet electrification. So we have been working on this, Chief Lyons and I, from our own angles. So we'll both be talking tonight to you about fleet electrification and where the city is going. First, I wanted to give you a little background. This is right out of our new master plan. One of our goals from Chapter Eight is to reduce our environmental footprint in all city operations and services. So we are, you know, this is front and center to us to try and make our operations as environmentally sensitive as we can and reduce our footprint. The one thing that we need to do that was pointed out in the master plan is create an action plan. So that is one thing that is on our work plan for 2024. We, as a staff, will put together and create an action plan and bring that to council to discuss and add and subtract to that plan. Because having a good action plan moving forward is really what we need to do. So we have incremental steps that we can take and have a plan how we're going to move into the future. So what are we doing now? We are currently participating in a countywide EV planning process. Arapahoe County is sponsoring this, but it's through XL Energies Partners in Energy. I'll talk a little bit more about that. I've got a couple of slides on that. But that, that's, we've just started that. We've had two meetings so far. We have another one this month. We are hopefully installing two charging stations at City Hall, which would be four total ports. I've got some more slides on that, too. This is just a little outline here. So we do have a hybrid code vehicle and an electric cart for special patrol that the police department currently has. The Parks Department has been implementing electric weed whackers and chainsaws in appropriate applications. So we do use the electric weed whackers for our improved parks, bluegrass around the city hall here. We just don't use them when we're doing eight-hour shifts up and down the streets and out in open space yet. The technology's just not there for an eight-hour day on a weed whacker. The electric chainsaws have really been good, which is surprising because we actually have the guys in the spring and fall when we get those storms on the edge of there. Instead of having to go back to the shop to get a gas-powered chainsaw, they all have a chainsaw, not all, but at least one person on shift has a chainsaw at all times in the truck. No gas leaking, still have to deal with bar oil, but it's great because they can just jump out, cut the branches they need, and continue to plow. So that's, that's been a really great thing that we've seen so far. And just speaking about sustainability, we are working on a bluegrass reduction plan to conserve water. We've already started this when we redid Colorado and Hampton Islands last summer. We've eliminated a lot of the bluegrass, thus lowering our water consumption. And we're going to continue to do that. The Parks crews are putting together an actual reduction plan on how we can have less bluegrass and use less water. So Partners in Energy is a collaborative, like I said, with XL in developing and implementing energy and electric vehicle plan goals. So the plan we're working on with the county is, the county is sponsoring it. All of the cities within the county are participants. So we're going to identify and support the implementation of electrification. We're talking about, you know, what are the barriers? Specifically talking about municipal and county fleets as well as commercial implementation for commercial fleets, charging for homeowners, charging for property owners, trying to come up with the whole plan. It's a, it's going to be at a higher level, but it's something that, since we are participating in it, we can use it as a base, basis for our more specific plan. And it will help us as we look for funding to say, hey, this is our plan, too, so we can show, you know, that we are involved in this. So as I mentioned, we are looking at installing two to four charging ports, which would be one to two chargers, Level Two here at the city. This, I just found out today that the grant cycle opens May fifteenth. I've been working with the Colorado, I'm drawing a blank, the department, the Energy Department, the Colorado Green Initiative Grant. They actually have been reviewing our, our grant, giving us ideas. So when, when the time does roll around and we have to put that in, it's been reviewed and we have a great chance of trying to get those funds from the state. And then when we do move pool vehicles, the vehicles that get parked here, we only have three of those that get parked here at the city right now besides the police vehicles, we'll have those ports available. We do have to keep some of those ports available for public consumption, but during the day while our vehicles are out, they will be, and there'll always be some available. We plan on charging the market rate, no markup at this point, just to get our money back for users that are here using the chargers, just to break even, so the energy they use, they're paying for. So when we built City Hall, we ran empty conduit to these two spots, which is the northwest corner of the parking lot. So this is where we would put those two charging stations. They do meet all of the requirements for ADA accessibility, and they are in a good location for park users, visitors to City Hall. So it, we hope to get good use from their location there. This is just what the, typically what the charging stations will look like. We'll have two of those hopefully in City Hall if we get this grant. And then I will turn it over to the chief to do his part here.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, good evening. So in terms of patrol vehicles, I just kind of want to frame an understanding of what those, of what the vehicles mean. For them to be used in a patrol environment, they must meet two criteria. One is that it's a police package. A police package patrol vehicle is typically a sedan or is being deployed now or small SUVs equipped with upgraded engine components, heavy-duty suspension, brakes, cooling systems. They're sort of a more robust vehicle. There are only three, well, that's not, only is probably the wrong word. There are three primary manufacturers of police package vehicles. That's Dodge, Chevy, and Ford. And that vehicle also must be pursuit rated. A pursuit rated vehicle means an enforcement vehicle that's been tested and is better equipped for the rigors of sustained high-speed driving and challenging performance in the field. It certainly doesn't mean just in pursuits, it's emergency response as well, so running lights and sirens. For a vehicle to be deployed in that environment, it must meet both of those factors. Currently, the, there are none. 2024, the first police package fully electric vehicle will be rolled out, and that is the Chevy Blazer. I'll have an opportunity to look at that vehicle in October at the chief's conference. And they typically, Chevy opens up their orders around June and usually open for just a week. So we won't be able to meet that for, obviously, for this budget period. But certainly moving forward, we're excited about where this technology is going. There has been, thanks, Jay, I forgot about this. There has been some testing, which I'll touch on in a little bit, on the electric vehicles. The Michigan State Police does a police test every year on new vehicles and both the Chevy Blazer and the Ford Mustang Mach-E, which is a prototype electric vehicle for patrol use. Both of those were tested. In terms of cost, currently, the vehicles that we're purchasing run around $62,000. That is the cost of the vehicle and its outfitting. We're running around $44,000 for the vehicle itself, another $18,000 for the equipment necessary to equip that police vehicle. The current cost of electric vehicles such as a Tesla is $62,000 off the lot. Of course, keeping in mind that it is not pursuit rated nor a police package, with another $20,000 in outfitting in terms of lights, siren, computers, those kinds of technologies. Excuse me, there is an initial cost of setting up and installing those charging stations, as mentioned. The quotes from XL are kind of all over the place, but somewhere between, the early quotes were somewhere between $30,000 and roughly $150,000, although I think those just came in much higher recently, at around a quarter million dollars to run the power necessary to outfit the police department. Maintenance is something that we keep an eye on. Currently, we contract with the Inglewood Service Center to service our fleet. They are not equipped to service electric vehicles at this time, so the dealership from the manufacturer of which we purchased those vehicles would be required to maintain those vehicles moving forward. I will just mention, there was, in actually every study that, that looked at the electric, the full electric police vehicles, there was an indication around cold weather and how that might affect the performance of that vehicle and its battery capacity as much as 40%. Naturally, space and comfort is important to us. As you know, our officers are working 12-hour shifts. It's a long time to be in that vehicle. We have moved to a more spacious, small SUV. We have the Dodge Durango and the Ford Explorer, as are our police package vehicles. Chevy, as I mentioned, is rolling out the Chevy Blazer, which is smaller, although I know they're making some considerations for, for the amount of equipment that has to go into that vehicle, the consoles different, the in-car computer, those kinds of, those kinds of things, the ticket printers, the dash cams. There's a lot that goes into that. So comfort and space will be something that we would consider looking at in the future as well. Some industry trends, as mentioned, a lot of agencies are taking this leap as well and kind of moving baby steps to electric vehicles via hybrids first. Every police manufacturer is producing a hybrid vehicle in an effort to mitigate the carbon footprint and the, the need to fuel those as often as we do. We have, as a police department, we've already been moving toward the hybrid EV vehicle, electric vehicle direction. We purchased, if you haven't seen it yet, I'd like to show you sometime, we've purchased a electric golf cart. And we've also made the decision to migrate our administrative vehicles to hybrid as soon as they're up for, for replacement. I mentioned the Michigan State Police testing, and I just stuck an article in there, but it, it talked about the performance as being reduced as compared to gas-propelled vehicles. Currently, the Mach-E and the Chevy Blazer did not test well as compared to its predecessors. However, both manufacturers have indicated that this technology is improving, and they recognize that this is the future of vehicle manufacturing. And they've indicated that around 70% of their research dollars are dedicated to moving to electric vehicles, even for police use.
So for police use, we would have to go to Level Three charging, as Chief Lyons mentioned. And our buildings were not big enough when they were built to bring in 480-volt electric panels. As Chief Lyons also said, and I sent, I worked with XL to get an estimate for bringing that power in, and their range just for the power to get to the first transformer on this is anywhere between 235,000 and 300,000 to bring in the power for six chargers to make sure half of the fleet could be charged at any given time. And then, just, you can get soup to nuts on the other end when you go to get your Level Three chargers. And so the costs for those are hopefully starting to come down. But we've been, you know, building this around, seeing, you know, what can we do to get started? And you can't just pull in enough power for one charger at a time. It's, you have to be ready to pull in all that power and have it there so you're not continually going back and adding more power, adding more power. You've got to bring that power in and then slowly transition into your vehicle use. So I will switch over now to Public Works electrification.
Jay, real quick, and I don't know if chief or you want to, but can you talk a little bit why the fleet vehicles could do the Level One charging or Level Two charging, but the police patrol vehicles have to be Level Three charging? What's the difference?
So the Level Three charging, it takes, depending on how much they're used, if they come in for lunch and they plug in, it is about 15 minutes to bring it back up to 80% power if they're down around 50%. So they've got that quick turnaround, they can get back out on the street. And then the fleet, the, the pool vehicles, with the technology that's out there now, we believe we could get a whole day, maybe more, because those vehicles are, you know, starting, stopping, they're not constantly running for eight hours, and they can charge overnight here at City Hall then. So that Type Two charging is much more affordable and is less investment upfront.
Can I ask you one question while you're on that? And it's clear why, I mean, the equipment for Level Three versus Level One, the various levels, the equipment's more expensive as well as the transformers and stuff. But somewhere in there, I thought I saw that then the cost of the power changed, and that I didn't understand.
Well, it's because...
A kilowatt's a kilowatt.
Well, but it's, it's the number of kilowatts you're using. That, that Level Three uses more than that with, but, but everything I've read is it's, you know, there is more, more cost involved in the actual power because of the way that charger is charging. So you're using more power to get that vehicle up to that. I can check in, but that's everything I was told and understand. Maybe I understand it wrong, but I can clarify that.
And being the old utility background guy that I am, I mean, there are demand charges, various industries have demand charges. My uranium mill, if I just switched on, the ball mill, just switched it on for a second, it cost $150,000. It was a demand charge for the amount of power, but then the kilowatts then thereafter coming in were whatever else was...
Yeah, and I'll do more research on that.
Jay, one more thing, real quick. Well, I know my uranium charges have also skyrocketed, and it's contributing to the support, no, I'm just kidding. But don't we also have patrol car situations where we, we don't, we can't afford to have that patrol vehicle out of, you know, charging overnight, all night, like we can with the, the fleet vehicles, right? We have to basically turn them right around because we don't want to, we can't afford to buy patrol cars for everybody to have for one officer.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no downtime really on those.
Right, so if we are going to move towards patrol car, we've got to be able to charge it on the spot.
I guess that brings up the question right now, if everybody kind of has their own patrol car, do they customize them or is that not, oh, they don't have that now?
No, they roll. So everybody shares vehicles, so they're out 24/7. So it comes in for Shift One, Shift Two takes it, comes in for Shift Two, Shift...
Oh, that wouldn't change?
No, that wouldn't change. But that's why we have to be able to charge them immediately. We don't have any downtime to charge them overnight.
Well, when you talk about charging them immediately, we just decided that bringing it in for 15 minutes might get you from 50 to 80%. Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
So if, if that vehicle's been out for an eight-hour shift and it comes back in, it's going to be at 20%?
It may. We would hope that they could come in and charge them partially, if not fully, during their lunch shift or that type of thing.
Because all I'm saying is, it seems like we're going to have more than just a short little gap in between shifts going out then. So you're going to have a shift roll in and then wait 60 minutes to get a full charge before the next shift goes back out in those same cars?
So to be clear, so they're, the, of our fleet, half-run during the day, and they're out for 12 hours. And then when that shift ends, they down those vehicles, and the night shift takes an additional set.
Okay.
But for us, and I think what the director was sort of getting at, for us, we run 16 vehicles in our, our fleet, department-wide. At any given time, half of those have to be charging because the other half are in the field. So we would need at least eight charging stations to charge the down vehicles. But that, I think there's just a little miscommunication. So what you're referring to is what we call hot seating, which is they run literally 24 hours a day. Ours do not. They are down for a shift, but only just one shift because there's now only two shifts 24 hours a day, right? So half the vehicles are out in the field, the other half are charging in this case. And then when, when that shift ended, they would go to charge and the other half would go into the field. So it's, they're not running 24 hours.
And did we, we moved recently from three eight-hour shifts to two 12s?
Three 10s.
Three 10s.
Yeah, they work 10-hour shifts to, which is like six patrol teams, down to four teams, 12 hours a day.
And so, so we would have eight vehicles sitting idle on charge for that, for 10 hours essentially before they're ready to go back out, before they're needed to go back out.
Assuming our fleet were full and that there was no down vehicles in service any given time where we've got three vehicles in the shop, so pie in the sky, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that makes sense, thanks.
Jay, and, well, both Jay and chief, what kind of miles do we put on in a typical day? I really don't have a feel for that.
In Public Works, it's not a lot unless we're plowing. I would guess less than 50 miles a day on our vehicles, but I'll let chief speak to what the average would be for his fleet.
Just an average ballpark, we're running around 250 miles a day in a 12-hour shift. And so now the shifts are longer, the miles have increased naturally because they're in the field much more than they used to be.
All right, on to Public Works. So I, again, a little more background, this is from the Public Works Department Strategic Plan. And I won't go through this whole thing, but again, you can see we've been thinking about and continue to think about sustainability. So we've got sustainability in our mission statement, environmental stewardship, and then one of our goals is to proactively comply or exceed with all environmental and quality standards, including stormwater, air quality, and wastewater. And this is a quote that, and I don't remember what article I got it from, that "electric vehicles have the potential to result in significant air quality benefits, especially when accompanied by carbon-free and low-carbon electricity generation." And I'll get to that here a little, in a minute, and talk about what we can do in that. The barriers to adoption in Public Works have been the lack of charging infrastructure, which we've talked about, and a lack of the product diversity, especially in heavy-duty capabilities. City of New York, I think it was, they were going to be 100% electrified in their fleet by 2028, and they had ordered some trash trucks to do that. Well, their trash trucks, 3,000 in their fleet, all also plow snow. So they had six or seven vehicles that they bought to test, and after two hours, the snow plow, because of the snow plowing, they'd last 10 hours moving trash, but only two hours plowing snow. So those capabilities are not, are not getting there yet. They're moving that way, and we hope they, they move along real quickly. And, and a lot of fleet managers complain that, you know, they're ready, they want this heavy-duty trucks and equipment onboard, but the technology's just not there yet. So I don't want to sound all doom and gloom, but we are fully committed to reducing the city's carbon footprint and moving towards electric vehicles. But we want to make sure that we don't jump in with both feet and, and get caught. So we are recommending a, you know, take baby steps because for certain applications, the technology is just not yet available. And until that technology is available, in Public Works, moving our pickup trucks and dumps from fossil fuels to electric is not possible yet. Hopefully, the hybrids will start being able to be used for snow and that type of thing, and we can start moving some of our smaller trucks to that. And until the technology is available for patrol vehicles, we should remain with fossil fuels and hybrids. So next step, we're going to continue to work with XL, and hopefully we will come back to council with what it would cost for us to convert our buildings to be all powered through the renewable energy, through whether wind, solar. We currently pay a portion of the police department power through those renewable energies. There's only a certain portion that you're allowed to convert over to that because of the, how much XL really has. They can't sell more renewable power than they have. So we will work with them and bring some numbers forward to council for the 2024 budget to see what we can do. There will be some cost implementations to that, but I think it's a good step to start moving towards for the city. So we do...
And I won't go through this whole thing, but again, you can see we've been thinking about and continue to think about sustainability. So we've got sustainability in our mission statement, environmental stewardship. And then one of our goals is to proactively comply or exceed with all environmental and quality standards, including stormwater, air quality and wastewater. Um, and this is a quote that, and I don't remember what article I got it from. That electric vehicles have the potential to result in significant air quality benefits, especially when accompanied by carbon-free and low-carbon electricity generation. And I'll get to that, uh, here a little, in a minute and talk about what we can do in that. Um, the barriers to, uh, adoption in public works have been the lack of charging infrastructure, which we've talked about, and, and a lack of the, um, product diversity, especially in heavy-duty capabilities. City of New York, uh, I think it was, they were going to be a hundred percent electrified in their fleet by twenty-twenty-eight, and they had ordered some trash trucks to do that. Well, their trash trucks, three thousand in their fleet, all, also plow snow. So they had six or seven vehicles that they'd bought to test, and after two hours, the, the snow plow, because of the snow plowing, they'd last ten hours moving trash, but only two hours plowing snow, so. Those capabilities are not, are not getting there yet. They're moving that way and we hope they, they, uh, move along real quickly. And, and a lot of fleet managers complain that, you know, they're ready, they want this heavy-duty trucks and equipment onboard, but the technology's just not there yet. So I don't want to sound all doom and gloom, but, um, we are fully committed to reducing the city's carbon footprint and, and moving towards electric vehicles. But we want to make sure that we don't jump in with both feet and, and get caught. So we are recommending a, um, you know, take baby steps, because for certain applications, the technology is just not yet available. And until that technology is available, in public works, um, moving our pickup trucks and dumps from fossil fuels to electric is, is not possible yet. Hopefully the hybrids will start being able to be used for snow and that type of thing, and we can start moving some of our smaller trucks to that. And until the technology is available for patrol vehicles, we should, uh, remain with fossil fuels and hybrids. So next step, we're going to continue to work with XL. And hopefully we will come back to council with what it would cost for us to convert our buildings to be all powered through the renewable energy, through whether wind, solar. We currently pay a portion of the police department, uh, power through those renewable energies. There's only a certain portion that you're allowed to, uh, convert over to that because of the, how much XL really has. They can't sell more renewable power than they have. So we will work with them and bring some numbers forward to council for the twenty-twenty-four budget to see what we can do. There will be some cost implementations to that, but, um, I think it's a good step to, to start moving towards for the city. So we do have some opportunity for full electric vehicles. We have three here that we call admin pool vehicles. The right-of-way manager has one out all day, our maintenance tech has one, and then we just, we only have a single vehicle for admin to share if they're running for special events or meetings or those type of things. We've never had to buy any of those vehicles, those vehicles have all been passed downs for the past fifteen years from the police department, so this will be a new expense for the city to convert these. But we'd like to convert at least one of our pool vehicles in twenty-twenty-four. We'd also, um, we are going to try to get, uh, an electric, full electric or a, a second hybrid for code enforcement, and take their pickup truck and put it into the public works fleet as a replacement vehicle instead of buying a new one. It's a newer vehicle, it's not up for scheduled, uh, sale yet, but it makes sense for us, we can use that in public works and start moving towards that, um, EV vehicle. And, and get a few of those here at the city so everybody can try them out, we can see what they're all about and move in the right direction. And then, um, within the next three years, we hope to convert at least one of our riding mowers to electric. The, uh, technology is starting to come along, and so we, we want to get one of those and, and test it and see how it does before we go to, uh, full electric on those. So that is our presentation, so we are ready for more questions.
Jay, if you could, I, I'm trying to remember again. Tell me again why, um, pickups and some of the fleet vehicles don't have the technology to be used. I understand about police cars, but tell me a little bit more about why regular vehicles.
So our, our pool vehicles are all good. We use every single one of our pickups and large trucks for plowing snow. Um, and their, the technology is not there for vehicles to be able to last more than a couple hours with a plow on them. The, the, none of the new Ford pickups or Dodge pickups, none of them come with a plow package because the batteries can't handle the work that is needed for those. So, and there's a lot of other fleets that, such as the county, where a lot of their pickups, they don't use for plowing snow, so they can start to convert those. But in speaking to the county and other cities, they're really in the testing phase right now where if they have electric vehicles, they're pool vehicles, they're not heavy-duty or, uh, public works vehicles that are being used daily for those type of tasks.
Other questions?
I heard at the beginning of the presentation that we're going to put the two chargers in right out here, hopefully get the grant money or some grant money to do that. And we're going to charge market rate for those. I guess, coming from a guy who's never owned an EV and never had to go plug in in a public place, is that typical that you pay in a public place for that electricity? Okay, I just, I don't have any experience with one or the other.
I think there's, there's a mix out there. Some, there's a mix. Some cities don't charge, some, I see Tesla chargers that say no cost in certain parking lots. But, um, it's a mix, but most cities that I've researched and talked to, they charge the market rate just enough to cover their costs, not, there's no profit in that.
If I, if I think about it, excuse me. What's a, what's a typical EV owner confronted with? You charge at your house because that's, you know, you're buying the electricity at a relatively good rate, especially if you have the time of day rates, and one of these days I may have that. They're, they're, they're coming, they keep telling me they're coming, you know, but, uh, but anyway, that or you have to go to a public charging station and, excuse me. Tesla had a deal where if you bought one of the early Teslas, you could use their charging stations for free, but that's kind of gone away. And there are companies like ChargePoint and others that, um, provide basically a pay by the, well, a kilowatt or whatever, you know, you put your credit card in and you register and they plug in and-
I just, I, I didn't have any experience with it. I have one other question. I'm just curious from a budgeting perspective, and I'm not sure, Doug, if you've been around long enough to know the answer to this, but do we, does public works, pay anything to the police department for the hand-me-downs?
No, because both-
How do we account, how do we account for that?
Both, both of our budgets are in the general budget.
Okay.
In, in the general account, so, so there's no, yeah, there's no difference because, uh, we, it all comes out of the same pool in the capital.
Okay, no, no other questions, thanks for the good presentation.
One thing that, and I think Randy was touching on this a little bit, but obviously we're dedicated towards moving towards this and the, the handout information that you gave us was really, really good. And so I'm just wondering, are we starting to build an inventory base of our, you know, the, the, the ma- the maintenance on our vehicles, the, the hours, the time utilized, the miles, et cetera, so that we have something that we can utilize to compare when we start to do a feasibility study on EVs? It seemed like that was, and then I was really impressed with this, I don't know if anybody went to that, it was referenced in here, but what Westminster is doing and in terms of the things that they're doing, to kind of develop a database so that they could do an analysis, et cetera. It seemed really, really-
Yeah, and I know the police and I'll let, uh, Chief Lyons talk about that. They track it, we also track it, we have that information. Because of our, uh, we use Inglewood, they, they have all of that for us. Anytime we want to go over there and say, can we see the records? It has the yearly mileage, it has, it has everything for us that we need for that baseline. And we also have our written records of how many miles we plowed in this, you know, storm and that storm. So yes, we have all that data that we can use to begin to build that reference point.
And I would agree, so we keep a, um, a maintenance record of all of our fleet, primarily for budget purposes, so we know what is due for replacement as we begin the budget process. The three criteria kind of come into play when deciding whether we're going to replace a vehicle, age, mileage and maintenance records. And we hold on to our vehicles a long time. I've committed to, to hanging on, um, to a vehicle before it's north, I mean, we won't even look at it unless it's north of one hundred thousand miles, which is well above the industry standard. Just simply because we run a lean budget and, uh, and replacement vehicles are a big deal. So everything that we are replacing this year are for vehicles that are north of a hundred thousand miles, have a significant maintenance record and/or age plays a part in that as well. So we, we keep that and we track our mileage every month.
And I want to, I think Doug and I both would like to thank the chief for being open-minded about that. I can tell you, I have known many police chiefs who are militant with their desire to turn patrol vehicles over as often as possible. And it has a real budget impact, so.
Although one thing that I would, that I, I'm sure this is the case, it would have to be the case, is that fifty thousand miles driving on Cherry Hills streets is not fifty thousand miles driving on Denver streets.
Well, for our public works vehicles, it's, I, you know, we, we don't have the wear and tear, they do. We have a little different criteria than the chief. Once the maintenance vehi- maintenance costs start getting more than the worth of the vehicle, that's when we get rid of it.
Right.
Which is, you know, twenty years, twenty-five years sometimes, but we're not in that public safety, um, realm. And so, um, we stretch those vehicles as long as we possibly can.
And again, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the chief doing that as well, but I suspect that's a factor that allows you to be able to be that accommodating or whatever, whatever the right word is there.
Absolutely, and we're not running our vehicles so hard for the eight years that we might have a patrol vehicle that, you know, it's, it's taped together. We have excellent service agreement with Inglewood Service Center, our officers take pride in their vehicles, they treat them well. And to your point, we're not, although, you know, a hundred thousand miles is a hundred thousand miles, they're not as hard miles. And I think that's what you're suggesting, and I would agree with that.
And it obviously goes without saying that, and of course, you never run unsafe vehicles and you never would do that.
I have to, well, first of all, I thank you very much for the, for the good work and the progress so far. Have to say I'm encouraged. You know, I've had, gosh, I mean, electric vehicles, hybrid vehicles, electric yard equipment, you name it. And been a pretty happy camper, I mean, the advantages, a lot less maintenance. They're, they're, they're more expensive upfront at this point in time. Maybe that'll come down, but you make some of that up, and I couldn't give you a specific feature, uh, specific numbers, but you make some of that up in maintenance and reliability, man, you push the button and you go, you know, and that's good. I like the clean air aspect of it, and along with that comes not just doing good things, but I think there's a Cherry Hills Village image, uh, issue that goes on with that, goes along with that, to the extent we publish, uh, publicize the successes and, and, um, and, and our progress, which I think is, is a good thing for, for us to do. I, you know, I would tell you, my experience has been, uh, it's a learning curve. And I'm one of these folks that's a little bit more of an early adopter type, you know, and I, I, but I think in the long run, that suited me well. We have enough vehicles that if we start down that learning curve, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll know more. What we can adjust, what we can accommodate. I would never advocate taking a good vehicle out of service just to replace it for like, with an electric one. I'd never advocate getting a wrong vehicle for the job. On the other hand, I think when you start to get some in the fleets, you're going to be pretty excited and it may be just the opposite kind of problem. You know, how can we get more faster? So getting, getting started and coming down the learning curve, I think is, is very wise. And, uh, and the research is good and I, I applaud it and encourage you to keep up the good work.
I'm sorry, I just have one more quick one. Do we have, uh, do we have the numbers, I'm sure you do, on what it costs to fuel up a typical police cruiser for a year or a month or whatever metric you want to use?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but we do have those numbers, yes.
I can, I can give- The police department does about a thousand gallons a month, give or take fifty to seventy on either end. But we are, uh, we're, we're using about a thousand gallons a month, and actually just this year, uh, started using our own fuel. We were paying retail, uh, at a, at a local gas station, and now, Director Goldie has ordered enough fuel and we, we drive over to their shops to fuel up, and so it's actually saved us a little bit of money as well.
I can give you a couple of comparisons that might, uh, because I'm, I'm more in that, uh, consumer world, you know? But when I run my car in hybrid mode, it'll get about thirty-five miles to the gallon. When I'm pure electric, I get over a hundred miles to the gallon. So part of it is that the energy itself is cheaper per unit. The other part is you consume a whole lot less of it. So with, with some fairly stout fuel bills, there might be some pretty interesting numbers that go along with that as, you know, if you, uh, uh, you know, as you think about converting. And that's a big advantage as well, I mean, that, that's, and, you know, a couple of that, that I'm not on the time of day business yet, that's coming, and, you know, so there'll be further savings yet. You, you, you kind of got to keep working the system to optimize it.
Yeah. At, at a thousand gallons a month, that's per vehicle?
Oh, that's for the entire fleet.
Okay, I was, I was-
No.
I'm blown by that you spent that much, went through that much fuel. But at, at three bucks, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year, at four bucks, it's forty-eight thousand dollars a year. I mean, it, it's material amount of money for the fleet of, of police cruisers, so. I, uh, I think optimization is a good term there, figure out the best matrix of, uh, hybrid or electric or some, in some cases, fossil fuel, gas.
Yeah. Did you, did you mean Randy when, I didn't understand, when you said on full electric? It's about a hundred miles to the gallon, I'm like-
I have a button-
Why isn't it?
Isn't that an equivalency?
I have a button that I can push that puts it in all-electric mode. And so in that, and, and what they have is a, uh, an equivalency, so it's called MPG E. But that's, I, I, it should be comparable to what, to an MPG on a pure gasoline engine. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's smoking, plus the acceleration's kind of cool. If I was in a pursuit, I would not want to be the guy in the internal combustion vehicle, you know? I mean, that'll slap you back in your seat, those, those electrics. But yeah, it's, it's good stuff, it's good stuff. And I, I, you know, my experiences, I probably did it the hard way, I guess, I bought the car, it had a one-ten charger in it. I thought, well, fine, I've got one-ten circuits. I used that and the charging was kind of slow. Then my son got a all-electric vehicle and we were kind of cooked at that point, sharing a charger and, and so on. So we went to two-twenty volt and had the wiring changed. There was weaknesses, it was a BMW OEM charger, uh, but there were weaknesses in it and we were going through those chargers at a fairly good clip, fortunately they were taken up by warranty. It was like five hundred dollars, I mean, it wasn't a huge, um, investment. And the bill to get the two-twenty volt, uh, in was like four hundred bucks or so. Well, decided I'd go with a, a different brand of charger. Found out that they're interchangeable, it's not like the charger talks to the car or any of this stuff that was, you know, questions in my head. Got another charger and it was much higher amperage than the, the first BMW ones were like fifteen amp chargers. I got like a forty amp charger, um, and that affects charging time. But it also caused me to have to go get heavier gauge wiring from the load center, the circuit breaker panel, to the, uh, outlet in the garage. So I had to have that rewired, um, not as expensive, but still, uh, heavier gauge wire. And so now the car's charged much quicker, partly because we're on two-twenty and then partly because we're higher amperage, um, and that matters too in this, in this process. The car governs the amount of electricity it'll take, not the charger's output. So it'll limit, uh, depending upon what car it is and what it's set up to do. But yeah, it's been a learning curve, a bit of an adventure, which is why I'm kind of encouraging, yeah, get, get, get a toe in and, and learn and, and grow with it. The technology will continue to improve and, and I'm pretty sure it's the way of the future, so. I think you're doing, doing the right things and making good progress and it's exciting.
May I put in, we'll, I'm sorry, go, go Jay.
I hope to be in front of you soon for our hydrogen cars.
Well-
That's the next one.
That could happen too.
May I put in, we, I'll, I'll just say, I want to thank, uh, both these gentlemen for the, for the presentation. I think they did a great job of summarizing staff's approach, which I hope reflects really council and the community's direction that you've provided to us. And we do want to be, uh, you know, an early adopter, we do want to explore this. We may not want to be the first adopter though, uh, as it relates to certain kinds of these technologies, especially as it relates to brand-new applications like patrol vehicles, snow plows, things like that. It would be nice to let somebody else maybe work out those kinks first, but if we're set up and ready to go, hopefully we can avoid the cautionary tale, you might have seen the RTD article regarding the buses that they purchased that they're going to have to return. I don't think that's a cautionary tale against going towards EV. It's a cautionary tale against going towards EV in the right way. And that's really what, I, I guess I would offer to you, that's what hopefully comes across tonight. We have heard from the community and city council, we are moving in this direction. We just want to make sure we're doing it the right way so that we can avoid that type of misstep, and that's being generous. So, um, that's really what I hope you take away from tonight's presentation.
Can I jump in real quick and a couple of things? Curious as to whether or not there's any role for e-bikes within any of the city fleet. Obviously, you're not going to pick up a stray dog with an e-bike, but a city building inspector seems like it's a pretty easy way to get out there and do things like that, um, carry clipboards, I don't know whether or not those type of, you know, if there's a role for an e-bike, it sure seems like it would be something that would be something we could integrate within our system. The question that I had for you, and let me kind of just run through a few different things, is when we mentioned level-two charger out there, if it's being paid for by grant money, that's great. If we end up paying for things on our own, I guess my question is, is should we be charging or are companies charging a rate that encompasses not only the kilowatt, but also a piece of the infrastructure as well? And then if the answer is yes, I guess the question that I have is, should Cherry Hills be, you know, with the image of Cherry Hills, should we be providing this for free or is this something that we do want to charge on? And I, I don't know the answer. The other question I've got for you is- The other question I've got for you is, do charging stations, are they vandalism-proof? Do they operate 24/7? What happens on that? And then with respect to level-three charging, for the idea that we want our cars, our police force cars to be able to come in during lunch hour and things like that, it still seems like if they're down for 12 hours, it seems maybe like a little bit of overkill to be able to, to require that we are able to top them off, but then have them down for 12 hours, if that makes any sense, that we don't need the speed charge. So maybe we could do a combination of a few threes and a bunch of twos or something. I don't, I, again, it's the optimization that Randy talked about, but I'll shut up and let you guys kind of hit the different things I asked about.
So the first one was the e-bikes.
Yeah, so we, we actually have in this year's budget, 2023's budget, we budgeted for two e-bikes for our community partnership function. I've mentioned several times that you'll see as weather improves, you'll see us on the trails more often, on, along the roadways, in our neighborhoods, on, on bike patrols. I think that's a, a function that we should be providing our community. And the commander and I, the week after next, will be testing and evaluating those bicycles, which model we're going with. It's, it's already built in the year's budget and we're, we're pulling the trigger on that.
I was thinking, our inspectors are contract, so it'd be hard for Public Works, but I, I think police is, is a great place for those bikes. And, and Counselor Eber had a lot of great questions and those are things that we'd like to sit down with. We first want to get the chargers in and then talk to council about, should it be free? Should we be charging for some of the infrastructure costs? Because there will be some costs on our side, even with the grants. And those are all things that we would like to have a, a good discussion with and come to a consensus, that this is what we should be doing and why we should be doing it. So, but just to get a foot on the ground, we just want to get those chargers in, you know, start either, for, we could do a trial period where there's no cost for a while. We can set those chargers so they're not available during certain hours. If you just don't, if, if the council says, we just don't want people pulling in, because they will be on some type of app. You'll pull up SharePoint or there's, you know, whoever we go with when we buy those and they'll be, oh, you can pull over here. But if it's only nine to five or whatever, we can, you can set all those parameters and they're not vandal-proof, but as these new chargers come out, they are more vandal-resistant. And we've got our patrol going by all the time in this lot.
But the decision of whether to make them free, whether to charge for the electricity costs, whether to incorporate overhead charges into that, that's all a council decision to make at the end of the day. That's truly a policy-level discussion. So we will certainly help set the table for you on that, but that will be your call at the end of the day.
And we still get federal and state tax credits if we buy vehicles, correct? I mean, we buy them tax-free, but I mean...
No, I, we are not eligible.
We're not eligible for that stuff, okay. So sixty-two thousand, Randy buys one, he gets a, a tax credit, but we don't?
No, we would get state costs, so it's probably going to, that sixty-two thousand, I believe, is the, is the, the state cost, not, you couldn't go and get one for that. You would probably pay seventy-two thousand, but we get the state bid cost.
Okay. State negotiates a price for a vehicle.
But, but everything I've found and I, because I had the same question, is are we, can we still get these credits? But if you don't pay the tax, you don't get the credit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good. Well, thanks again. I think, any other questions, comments? Okay. Yeah, excellent job. We'll call it a wrap and take a break for about nine minutes.
Use my little gavel. Roll call of members, please.
Counselor Eber. Counselor Henn.
Here.
Counselor Brier.
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Blum is absent. Counselor McGuire.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, audience participation. We have no one signed up, but of course, we don't stand on ceremony. Anybody? Anybody? Okay, seeing none. Reports from members of city boards and commissions, also seeing none. The consent agenda.
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, moving on to new business, Resolution 18, Series 2023, accepting a donation from the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation on behalf of the Cherry Hills Village Police Department. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, the president of the police foundation is not able to be here tonight, but he, um, has authorized me to just give a brief explanation of their donation. Uh, the foundation tries to, um, earmark certain amounts of money for one of their core priorities or strategies. In this case, it's equipment. Um, the... There was a previously scheduled discussion around, um, our pursuit policy. It's been pushed to next week. Uh, but what you will hear during that presentation is, uh, a intervention piece of equipment that allows us to, uh, to stop violators before a pursuit begins and/or recover a stolen vehicle. Uh, those are identified most commonly as tire deflation devices. And the foundation, having recognized that need for that piece of equipment, has funded the entire purchase of tire deflation devices for every one of our patrol vehicles. Uh, so the eighty-five hundred dollars that they have earmarked for this particular donation is, uh, is twofold. One, for the tire deflation devices, and secondly, for some training equipment around, uh, the deployment of that, uh, tire deflation device. So, uh, the police department naturally is very excited to, uh, to take that revenue and, uh, and use it as necessary to purchase that equipment. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Chief Lyons? How exactly does the device work?
So the, there are, it's very complicated, believe it or not. There are three triangular pieces of equipment. And inside, um, these, these bars essentially are hollow tubes that when a, when a vehicle rolls over those tires, it punctures the tire with that hollow tube and allows for a slow deflation as opposed to like a blowout. Uh, it's, it's very controlled. Um, the ones that we are purchasing are twelve feet long. So there are three, four feet pieces that go into this nylon sleeve and will be deployed most commonly as vehicles exit our neighborhoods, which we're seeing most common. Um, as we've had discussions around our, our license plate reader technology, we are seeing stolen vehicles in our city every day. Um, and, uh, with almost a hundred percent certainty, there, those vehicles are fleeing. Um, and so currently, we have no real response to that. Uh, this allows us to, uh, to, with the best of efforts, uh, to deflate those tires and at least recover the vehicle. They don't get very far. Uh, if there's an apprehension that occurs as a result of that, great. Um, we are currently working on some policy amendments to allow for that device to be used and, and standard operating procedure from an operational perspective. Um, but that's exactly what it is. It, it rolls over this triangular piece of tubing and inside there are metal hollow tubes that allow for a, uh, a precise, slow deflation of those tires.
Any other questions? And I would entertain a motion.
No questions, but I do have a, do have an amendment that I think ought to be in the, uh, in the resolution. I think I brought this up the last time. I do think that we ought to be saying when we're accepting these, that the city council with gratitude accepts, and I recommend putting that in there.
Then why don't you, why don't you make the motion, Earl, with what you...
Okay, uh, I move to approve Resolution 18, Series 2023, accepting a donation from the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation on behalf of Cherry Hills Village Police Department, uh, with the amendment that in Section 1, the words "with gratitude" be added after, uh, the word "council."
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much to the police foundation and, um, to our police department for all of your work in keeping our community safe. Moving on to Council Bill 2, Series 2023, repealing and reenacting Articles 1 through 9 of Chapter 18. I'm just gonna say building codes. How about that?
I had a whole congratulations thing prepared for when you finished. Good evening, uh, Ms. Mayor and, and members of city council. Uh, as was just alluded to, the next item on your agenda this evening is the adoption of building and fire codes on first reading. Um, on, uh, April 4th, um, staff along with our building consultant presented a series of, uh, amendments to all of those laundry list of items, uh, seen before you. Uh, we are not going to go through every amendment, uh, in, in the code. However, the black line version of it was provided in your packet. And certainly, if there's questions or anything you want to discuss, we can certainly do that. But we didn't, we didn't feel like it would make good use of your time or our time to go blow by blow for every one of those. With that, I would like to bring up, uh, Mr. Steve Thomas from Shum's Cota. I think I mentioned to you last time. Um, Steve, um, has been around the village for a very long time. He's been our building official since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, so he knows this community. He knows building in this community. Um, but not only is he an expert here locally, but he is one of the nation's foremost experts in building code. Uh, he has the, I guess I'll call it pleasure, of helping draft, um, the codes every three years and, and travels the country. You're leaving for Minnesota.
Yep.
On Thursday. Um, and really travels the country teaching this stuff. So I would venture to say there's not many people in the U.S. that, uh, that know as much as Steve. Additionally, I do want to recognize that there is representation from South Metro Fire here as well. Uh, if you have any questions related to the fire code, uh, they can, they can address those too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Great, thanks, Paul. Uh, Ms. Mayor and City Council, Steve Thomas with Shum's Code Associates. Uh, uh, thank you for considering, uh, the adoption of the, uh, twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-one edition of the I codes. Um, we presented, uh, the study session kind of an overview of some of those, uh, major changes, egress window requirements, emergencies, uh, um, storage systems, uh, those kind of things, changes to stairways, make them a little safer. Uh, we're always trying to make the codes, uh, safer uh, and, uh, easier to use for, for the community. Uh, the other big change is the energy code. Uh, it does improve the, uh, um, energy efficiency of, uh, the buildings that we build. And, uh, that's kind of the whole idea. Uh, as we discussed at the study session, we're adopting this, uh, at this point because the state's, um, has passed a law that goes into effect, uh, on June 30th, uh, that, uh, puts some pretty onerous requirements on everybody. So we want to be able to see what that does. Uh, as long as we do this now, uh, we don't have to do that for another three years. So it gives us a chance to see what the state requirements are. So I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Do we have questions?
Question. The project completion paragraph, uh, once construction starts, it needs to be completed, or I guess it's from the issuance of the permit, maybe.
Correct.
Be completed within eighteen months. Are most buildings, are most of the houses in, in the village completed that quickly? Do most go to, uh, extended permit?
Depends on the nature and the complexity of the home, is the short answer. If you have a larger home that has more complex HVAC, electrical, that kind of stuff, we often see those go through at least one extension, if not two. But those that are less complex generally finish construction within those eighteen months.
I actually have a question. Um, in light of some other legislation that's circulating right now, the topic of, um, occupancy limits in a residence is sort of an issue of debate at this moment. And it started to occur to me that I don't know that we have, um, you can't have five hundred people living in a five thousand square foot house, right? That's gotta be illegal. I just don't know where. Is that in building code or is that in the fire code or?
I'm not sure exactly where it lives, but it's, um, no more than three unrelated people can live in one dwelling.
Well, but that's gonna go away.
That, that is...
And that's why I'm asking...
Assuming that House, our Senate Bill 213 passes, that's correct.
So that's why I'm asking because it feels like, and I, look, I, I'm actually fine with, I don't really care about that. But I do care about, there has to be some limit on, you know, what is a safe number of people to inhabit? And I know obviously in commercial buildings, we have maximum occupancy sign right back there. Is there a similar thing for residences and is it fire code or building code? No.
The residential code does not have, um, a maximum occupancy. That's usually in a property maintenance code or a zoning code, uh, or something like that. Now, in the building code, we look at it and we say, one person for every two hundred square feet.
Okay.
Right? So you take that five thousand square foot home, that's ten people. Um, and that's probably...
Is that a suggestion or is that just a...
That's what we design the means of egress to meet.
Got it. Okay.
So then we look at, okay, if you've got a unit that big, it's over, um, four thousand square feet, you need two exits out of that unit, for example.
Okay.
Uh, but the residential code by itself doesn't limit the number of people. They leave that up to, like I said, property maintenance code and zoning codes.
Okay, but that's an interesting thought. So say that again. It's one person for every...
Two hundred square feet.
Um, and so if there was an existing home, for example, that has two exits, I know, but nowhere in Cherry Hills...
They all have more than...
Only has two exits, right?
The residential code only requires one, believe it or not.
Okay.
So...
Um, okay, well, that's an interesting, I was curious...
I haven't heard that we have any overcrowding issues in Cherry Hills. Um, it's...
Not yet, yeah.
I mean, some of the Airbnb stuff, I know that's been an issue, but, uh, um, but the residential code by itself doesn't limit that.
So, and Paul, you don't know any other codes that limit how many related people can live in a house?
There's no regulation on how many related people can live in one unit. And Steve, for your benefit, there's some legislation at the state. I'm sure you've heard of it. And basically, we can still have a regulation limiting the number of people that can live in a unit, but it can't be based on familial status.
Right.
So that's where that was headed.
So it seems like we might need to adopt some sort of limit that applies to everybody equally.
Right.
The other question that goes with that is, is there a safe electrical draw per house, per person that you would look at in residential standards as well?
Um, not really. We look at more, um, the number of receptacles, the type of appliances that are going in. And, you know, to make sure that they have enough amperage to, uh, service everything that you have. We have, we have homes in Cherry Hills that have twelve hundred amp services. Um, so, uh, it's, it's not really based on the number of people. So...
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
It's a, it's a, it's a great community work and I love Cherry Hills. And I'm not just saying that because I'm here. I really, I, I tell people that all over the country, so.
Well, thank you.
I've got a, I've got a question. Um, back to Susan's question about permitting and the life, the life cycle of a permit. Experienced, uh, an issue recently where a resident of our village pulled a permit, uh, quite a while back to do what should have been probably a two-week job. And it's now been seven or eight months. And they have another ten months or twelve months, I guess, under their eighteen-month-long permit, per the way our code is currently written. I guess it begs the question, and they have, it appears that they have no real desire to move it along in any kind of, with any kind of speed. I guess it begs the question for me, should, and I'm, I'm really not trying to make changes for the, just for the sake of making changes, but maybe something that we should discuss. Is there some kind of permitting tier that you've seen in other jurisdictions where, uh, a job that is this size should get a permit that's good for a month and a job that's this size should get one for six months? And a whole home remodel should be, uh, or a whole home construction could be eighteen months with the ability to extend and whatnot. I just, this issue that I'm seeing right now with, with one particular house that I know is an issue, it just, it, they have no impetus whatsoever to move it along.
Have they abandoned the work? Isn't there some provision that says if, if, if they've stopped work for some period of time, they have to re-permit?
Yeah, if they stop work for a hundred and eighty days, then we can void the permit.
And... I don't know that that's the case in this particular instance. It's been downtime for six months.
Yeah. And so the base code, that's all it says. As long as you keep working, it can go forever. So the amendment was put in several years ago when it was taking forever to get some of these homes and the, the parking, the construction, everything was just crazy in the jurisdiction and in the neighborhood. So we put in the amendment to, to limit that. I, I mean, I'd have to think, ask what Paul thinks, but, you know, the, you could put a tiered system in there. You really got to think about what does that mean? And what level, you know, water heater, for example, that's easy. You get thirty days. Um, furnace or something like that. But at what level do you write, is it a valuation kind of thing?
Right.
Where do you draw that line to say thirty days, sixty days?
Footage or...
Square footage. And so, because you got to make sure that it's, that it works, number one, and that it's applicable and fair to everybody that's doing what they're doing.
Yeah, I get it. I, I think, you know, this, this, uh, particular case I'm thinking of, it seems like if they're doing any work there, it's happening one brick at a time. One brick per day going in to build a house, build a remodel.
Well, that goes to then, I mean, and, and again, we, with regard to enforcing our code, I mean, for instance, you get, you get a building permit, you got eighteen months to get it done. Nobody starts it within eighteen months. We don't just let them go and then start it after that, right? I mean, they got to come back and start over.
They start over.
And, because I, I actually believe there's, when I was on P&amp;Z, we approved something and it hasn't started yet. Long time ago. Um, uh, and when they come for an extension, they presumably, we make them get an extension. And if they don't, and they keep going, what do we do?
Well, so, there's a few different questions there. Let me take a step back and try and address them kind of in, in, in sequential order. So somebody goes through the permit process, gets an approved permit. It doesn't matter whether it's an electrical permit to hook up your AC or whether it's the Cherry Hills Country Club that just did that massive renovation. Every permit's good for eighteen months. At the end of that eighteen months, if you are not finished, the code says you are eligible for one four-month extension and you have to pay fifty percent of the job valuation as part of that. If at the end of that four months, you are still not complete, you have to apply for a second four-month extension and pay twenty-five percent of your, um, valuation for your job. If you're still not done after that second four-month extension, then you have to reapply for a new permit for the remaining scope of work and pay your permit fee based on the remaining scope of work's valuation.
As if it was new work all over.
Correct.
We enforce that.
We do.
Absolutely.
Ask our contractors.
And then this one brick at a time.
I'm fully aware that we enforce it. We've got some issues that I've talked through with community development in the past and we are enforcing that. But in this case, we're eight months into an eighteen-month timeframe where they're doing a ten thousand dollar brickwork job and it's going brick, one brick a day.
I got you.
See, I've had, I've had a little bit...
I just, I want to finish the thought to Councilman McGuire's point is, we can, we can do a tiered system. We can do whatever council wants in terms of a policy. The difficult part of that is at some point, there becomes an enforcement mechanism. And what we don't want to have happen is somebody get through construction, we say, okay, you can't, you're not eligible to do any more construction, and their toilets don't flush, their lights don't turn on, right? And it becomes this major eyesore and, and blight in the community. So it's a very fine line of trying to motivate folks to get their permit work done and still leave them enough time and a little flexibility to actually get the work done, if that makes sense.
I, I think council might remember, and this is a few years back.
That house, yeah.
There was a, a situation that was brought to council's attention a number of years back about that, that went beyond the eighteen months, got a four-month extension, got another four-month extension, then applied for a new building permit. It was taking a long time and there was somebody in the neighborhood who was so frustrated, so very frustrated, and they wanted us to do something about it.
Shut it down.
And the only thing that we really had available is to not approve their permit.
Which...
That is not an option.
That's an awful, that's an awful scenario for us and the neighbors.
Yes, I, they don't really want us to not approve the permit either. They just wanted us to somehow wave a wand really and make it go away. And, and I just would, I, I think Paul is correct. I would, I would, I would just remind council, we want to always allow somebody to finish their project. We want to incentivize it and make it financially painful for them to unnecessarily drag it out. We should absolutely do that, but we should never get to the point where we are not allowing somebody to finish their project.
Yeah, and I would suggest that the situation I'm talking about may be a outlier. It may not be, I don't, this is the first time I've really seen something like this happen. So I don't necessarily need to go revamp code in order to, um, fix this particular problem, unless of course, we all thought it was a problem that we have either seen, other, other people may have seen or you think we might see in the future, then we might address it. But it is, it is a little bit of a predicament, especially if it's one of your own neighbors.
Well, and the dilemma I've, I've come across is intuitively, a small project should go faster. But in this, in this environment, um, you, you know, you get on the phone, you talk to contractors and it's like, they can't hear you. You know, this job's not big enough. You don't have my interest. And so things can drag on for quite a while before you can line somebody up. And even then, you know, they do, they sign up, they do the, they're gonna do the job and they put a couple of days in and then they're off to some other projects.
And then they go to Australia.
And stuff like that. And it just takes mind-boggling amount of time to get it across, get a small job, job across the finish line. It's, uh, surprising.
Yeah.
And the supply, the supply chain is just ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got contractors saying, hey, we can't get toilets. Can we occupy the home with no toilets? Well, the answer is no. You got to have at least one. All right? But yeah, that's the other issue. And I'm sure that's not the issue with yours. It's just...
Okay, thank you.
So just, but just to clarify, and I'm, I'm looking at Section 105.5, which is...
What page? Just make it easier. Bottom of...
Uh, well, it's page two of fifty-four of the International Building Code, Chapter 18. And it says if, um, work, if commenced, but is suspended or abandoned for a period of ninety days, not a hundred days.
So we amended the hundred and eighty to ninety.
Beg your pardon?
We amended the hundred and eighty that's in the base code to ninety days.
Okay, so now it's ninety days.
But that's not a, that's not a new amendment. This is...
No, that's...
No, that, that's existing and it has been in code for a while.
Yeah, okay.
And that's intended for when work starts on a project and then they abandon the work.
Right.
That's...
Well, that's what I was saying.
It may be...
Maybe that helps.
Paul, the project we're talking about, that I'm talking about that you are aware of, may, may fall under that.
We'd have to do some digging, but yeah, we, we can.
All right, well, if there are no, oh, yep.
Real quick question. And when you talked about the pricing tier, Paul, um, an extension at, you said forty percent and then twenty-five percent, I think it was?
Fifty and then twenty-five.
Fifty and twenty. I guess my question is, is should we be going the opposite way? And, you know, for good cause shown, they can get to the fifty and the twenty-five, but otherwise, it actually is a financial disincentive to taking longer, that you turn around and you make that re, that extension hurt a little bit more so that people don't need it or don't try to get it.
Yeah, that certainly is a policy conversation that, that, you know, if council gives us that direction, we could certainly do that. What I will tell you is ninety-five percent of the time, the request for an extension or the subsequent extensions or even a new permit is based on some unforeseen circumstance in the supply chain. Right? Everything here is custom ordered and comes from Italy or Sweden or wherever. And most of the time, it really is a legitimate reason why someone hasn't finished their construction beyond just the client wasn't paying the bill or we got busy or whatever. It very, it does happen, but very rarely. So I, that long-winded answer to, most contractors are extremely motivated to get those projects done, uh, right? Because they get their payday when we issue them that CO. And so they are generally pretty motivated to finish their construction.
And, and as a reminder, the country club actually got extensions and fifty percent of that was painful. And so making that even more painful on a project that just was so massive, I... I, it just is gonna, it's just gonna take a while, right?
That wasn't how, what I interpreted, Rob, to say, and maybe that is, but what I understood it to be was maybe it should be twenty-five percent for the first extension, fifty percent for the second extension.
That's what I understood as well.
Yeah, not like fifty for the first one and then worse for the second. Um, but I don't know, I, no.
Policy.
Well, I guess I can go either way. I was just trying to say, put a large economic disincentive to delay. Whatever, you know, if they're for cause, no. Go back to the regular standard. But if you've got an egregious situation, you say, look, what, you know, almost on putting up a bond, it says you're gonna do the work and get it done, so we're not gonna see you again. I mean, that's a policy question we can address later, but.
Sure, I would, I would, I would caution council though to come up with some sort of interpretation by staff as to what egregious is.
Yes.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's like a recipe for.
That puts us in a difficult position and then ultimately the city attorney's office in a position of having to defend it in a court.
No, but I, I do think maybe there's some logic to flipping those. We can talk about that in a future. Alright, if there are no further comments, do I have a motion?
I move to approve on first reading council bill two, series twenty twenty-three. A bill for an ordinance to repeal and replace with amendments articles one through nine of chapter eighteen of the municipal code concerning building and fire regulations.
Second.
Who's that? Was that Susan?
It's been moved and seconded. Um, call the roll, please. Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holan?
Aye.
Counselor Will?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Moving on, council bill three, series two thousand twenty-three, amending chapter four, article four concerning retail sales tax definitions and exemptions on first reading. And that is.
Mr. Farman.
Oh, yep. Mr. Farman.
Yes.
Oh, it didn't. I'm all locked up.
Yeah, when you unplug it. No, when you unplug it, yeah, it's gonna lock up.
Laura can run it.
Yeah, Laura, you're gonna pull it up.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the first reading of a council bill regarding the city's sales tax definitions and exemptions in article four, section four four two-ten of the municipal code. And of course, tonight, the primary goal of reviewing these exemptions is to provide the final tax exemptions to the sales and use tax system or S U Ts with the Colorado Department of Revenue. So they will be able to process the city's sales tax exemptions. Here is a reminder just of the two A ballot implementation schedule to update the sales tax code, and there have been no changes to this implementation schedule. So we're right on track. At the April eighteenth study session, council reviewed the staff recommendation to add these four common retail sales tax exemptions. Now, the first two proposed exemptions are recently enacted state fees, which are the retail delivery fee and the state carryout bag fee. Both of these fees are not taxable by the state for retail sales taxes, ironically, but the home rule cities are allowed to tax the fees. Council also supported food for home consumption and newspapers and its supplements as sales tax exempt items. And there are Colorado Municipal League standard definitions for both of these items and are recommended for approval in this council bill. And there are also some examples of exempt food items in council's packet tonight. And if you have any further questions about those exemptions or food items, please let me know at this time. Hearing none, we can move on to some additional retail tax exemptions that were discussed. And council did support these items with clarifications and further limitations. So the first item is prescription drugs and other medical items. We do have an existing exemption in the city code for prescription drugs and sales of prosthetic and therapeutic devices. The council's direction was to broaden and clarify this exemption to include humans and animals and sales of medical supplies, prescription drugs, prosthetic devices and therapeutic devices for humans and animals. There is an existing definition of medical supplies already in the city code, section four four-ten. And we have slightly edited that by moving prescription drugs to its own specific definition, along with new, new definitions of prescription drugs and prosthetic devices strictly for animals. The two other exemptions were recommended by council to review a bit further, which are garage sales and occasional sales by city residents of food and beverages. And for garage sales, staff is recommending the Colorado Municipal League definition with a limitation on the first one thousand dollars in a sale of tangible personal property at a garage sale during the calendar year. So of course, council can edit this threshold or discuss any other changes to that exemption.
That threshold seemed really low to me. And, um, I, I think the situation that, um, we should probably discuss is, for example, our neighbors, um, downsized, got older, downsized, moved out of state and had a estate sale. I'm gonna guess, you know, they, I mean, I'm gonna guess they, they sold, I mean, they sold furniture, they sold clothes. Now, it's, it's all used. Um, and, and if you're a vendor in the city, it's not until you do a hundred thousand dollars in sales, right, that you start paying tax.
That's if you're out of state.
If you're out of state, right, good point. Um, but a thousand seems low. And I don't know how we feel about estate sales. Was a one-off thing, but I'm guessing they probably, you know, came closer to twenty or thirty thousand dollars with the amount of stuff that they sold.
Do we distinguish between estate sales and garage sales? Is there, is there a distinguishing factor there?
That's a good question.
It's part of the definition.
Because garage sales are literally in garages and in driveways. Estate sales, estate sales, I've never seen an estate sale where they moved the entire contents of the house.
Not everything.
Outside.
But there was stuff in the garage and in the driveway and in the house. And I mean.
Okay.
But I think the concept really is selling your used stuff from your home.
Well, and I'm not saying it should be twenty, well, yeah, I mean, that's what they did, but you know, even at a garage sale, you could easily make more than a thousand dollars.
So we, uh, elected to use the standard C M L definition for garage sales and that includes yard sales, estate sales and block sales. So all of that is included in the garage sales and the exemption applies to the first one thousand dollar proceeds beyond that is subject to taxation as currently drafted, but that's certainly a policy discussion for council.
First one thousand is exempt from tax and everything beyond that. And I, you know, I'm inclined to agree, Susan, that I keep coming back to this, like, the idea is not that we need more money and that we need to start making things difficult for people. We don't really want somebody, you know, running a retail store out of their front lawn on an ongoing basis, but.
Yeah, it seems to me that rather than have it be a dollar amount, it should be, if it's someone who's having regular garage sales, that's different. That is running a business and perhaps you should be paying tax. But if it's simply, I'm, you know, once a year I clean out my basement and I sell stuff or I'm moving out of state and I sell all the stuff I'm not taking with me, but it's a one-off situation. That's different to me than.
I suspect that the amount is easier to administer.
Correct. And usually in other jurisdictions where there is that number, you know, that frequency, whether or not, when it crosses the line of the occasional sale versus a business, there's a tandem provision typically in the zoning code that regulates the number that was, relates to previous topics.
How would the city even really manage or monitor this?
So, so that runs, I was gonna add on to that, that those cities that then add that tandem provision have a horrible time at actually enforcing it. Because what ends up happening is then you get neighbors who are annoyed and they'll just call a single garage sale in as violate, you know, look, and so you, you end up with a lot of chasing ghosts and it's, you have to start documenting every time. So some jurisdictions then take the additional step of licensing all garage sales just so they can track it. Right.
I think maybe removing it altogether.
But I guess my question is, is.
I think the key, the key was that we wanted to have some way of a bound, establishing a boundary between the informal garage sale, informal infrequent garage sale and the person that was doing business, buying used product, selling used product and, and calling it a garage sale or letting them call it a garage sale and be tax exempt. That was, that was kind of the thinking that I think we were starting.
Do we have anything in the zoning code?
Well, that doesn't necessarily, dollar, a dollar threshold doesn't necessarily solve that.
It should be.
Rob, did you?
If, if I may address that, the garage sale definition does because it applies, uh, well, it does in part. It only applies where the property to be sold was originally purpose purchased, again, enforceability, right? But originally purchased for use by the members of the household where the sale is conducted. So it's only when you, it's really when you have your old stuff.
When you're selling your own stuff, not reselling.
And your sports equipment.
I mean, like, has this ever been an issue here before? With people doing weekly garage sales? Yes? Oh, no, right, yes. Oh, you're like, keep going, keep talking. Okay. Yes, I mean, it's not really an issue and I think those kinds of definitions, like, if we got to the point where there was a problem, I think that we would have the leeway in these definitions to, to say, okay, you know.
You're reselling.
You clearly didn't have all of this stuff. Um, you just had a sale last week. This is all new stu-, you know? I think that we have the tools in there to address something that really became.
If it became a problem.
If it ever became a problem.
I, I don't think we're gonna see people voluntarily call the city and say, I need to fill out my forms and pay my taxes.
Nobody's ever gonna do that.
I mean, what's the point of having it in here?
I'm gonna make my kids do it.
What's the point of having it in here?
I sold everything for five dollars.
To exempt it so that they don't have to.
I know, but, but should the exemption be ten thousand, a hundred thousand?
I think it should just say garage sale and there should be no dollar.
Agreed.
And we've got reselling
stuff that was not for your personal use is, is not a garage sale, then I think we just take the dollar.
I agree. I think we should take it out of, as a, as a required.
Sorry, Rob, I didn't mean to.
No, no, I'm sorry. I provided to Chris, maybe this is the time to bring up what I sent you. And that is an article that talked about at the I R S and federal level about income. That the first six hundred dollars of a garage sale, apparently under the I R S code currently, the first six hundred dollars of a tax of a garage sale is no tax event. But the six hundred and first dollar and up, the way I read the article, puts you in a taxable situation based on having a garage sale. Now, I don't know when the last time any of us had a garage sale that we kept track of any of our records, but I just raise it because if that's a level that subjects you to income, should that be a level that subjects you to losing the exemption for the garage sale tax?
Well, that sounds like double taxation to me. You gotta pay income tax and sales tax?
Well.
It counts towards your, your income that, that qualifies for, you know, your overall income amount.
Yeah, no, I feel like that. Never have a garage sales.
It's a true garage sale. You've already paid more for the item than what you're selling it for now, so.
So theoretically, if you had a garage sale.
To declare that as income.
Okay.
After you cross that thousand dollar mark, you would suddenly increase your sales price by X amount to collect from the purchaser to pay for the additional sales tax that you would then remit for anything above that thousand dollars.
I think we should just exempt garage sales.
We certainly can do that. I just, to be clear, we, we included that after the last discussion where there was a a balance that was attempted to be arrived at by, you know, people abusing it versus, so we can certainly do whatever council wishes.
Are we, Earl, you have, you're awfully quiet, which is uncharacteristic.
Yeah, no, I'm.
I see the wheels churning.
Yeah, I know, and that's the wheels were turning a little bit. I mean, and I agree. I mean, I think the thousand dollars, I was just looking at the definition to, you know, again, when we're going through it, you try to do the best job you can to take care of any of these issues. And I agree, we're saying, hey, garage sales. And I was just looking at those use for members of the household. Is it regular use or is it personal use? I mean, is it something just to kind of make it a little bit more clear? Cause I can, you know, and again, we have great citizens here, but we got tricky people too. And it's like going, hey, I bought this.
We have Earl, is what we're saying.
I bought this for blah, blah, blah. And I'm looking at that and I'm going, I wouldn't want anybody to squeeze through. Not that I expect it to happen, but you see what I'm saying?
There's tricky people everywhere, not just in Cherry Hills. And this definition was by, um, created by the C M L tax.
No, no, I get that.
Attorneys from all over. So, I mean, I think here you could look at and say, give me your receipts. You know, I just saw you guys doing this last week. Show me where you purchased this mattress pad or whatever. I mean, or, you know, this snowboard, um, for, for personal use and, and then, and audit it then. The truth of the matter is, you're auditing resources will probably not be devoted.
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna be very difficult. It's all below the radar anyway. It'd have to be a large noticeable event, set of events for it to really come under scrutiny.
So do we hear consensus then that we just, we want to ex, is that, okay, we're backing it up. I think we want to exempt garage sales. Is that what we asked you to do last time around? No, okay. We want to exempt him without a limit.
Amendment, should you want to do it, it's drafted to just strike everything after shall be exempt from taxation in subsection J, right? If you just want to exempt them altogether.
On page five of the council.
Yep, page five.
Oh, I see. Yes, okay. When we do, yes, garage sale shall be exempt from taxation, period. Yeah, okay. So if that's what we want to do when we get to the motion, somebody remember that. Alright, moving on.
Alright, great. One more item on this slide. Uh, is the occasion, we're calling it occasional sales of food and beverages by city residents. So we're trying to capture council's intent on this recommended exemption. This would be defined in subsection K for food and beverages. The resident has cultivated, harvested, prepared or produced at their residence. And occasional sales i- is defined as no more than eighty-four days per calendar year. So we did come up with the eighty-four days because the state's licensing division actually exempts minors if they're conducting a business for eighty-four days or less from obtaining a business license. So there, there is a method to that madness, which is basically their, their summer vacation.
So the only question that this raises for me is intertwines with special event permits and sales of alcohol.
People wouldn't be allowed to sell alcohol they make in their homes. That's not allowed in.
Right, but if they make like a cocktail?
That's not allowed.
That doesn't count.
They can't sell it.
Okay.
They can't sell anything with alcohol that they've done anything to.
Okay. So what's the situation with like a cash bar? If you have a bartender caterer type thing?
So they have a, they have some kind of state license to.
Would they have to pay sales tax to Cherry Hills Village?
The intent of this is for, um.
Oh, but right, that's not the homeowner. Yes.
Right, this, this is a lot of words to get to. If you did it on your property and not even, you know, the beehives that are on your property, you know, on the prairies or whatever. But if it's local, small scale, your eggs in your chicken house or whatever.
Okay.
Um, by the resident, no more than this many days.
Okay. Fair enough.
Seems like they do this at King Supers and no longer at my front door, but the Girl Scout cookies, I wouldn't make them at my, in my house.
Charitable organization.
We don't have a King Supers in Cherry Hills Village. Okay, so.
They, they're tax exempt anyway.
Okay, excellent.
Those Girl Scouts. Alright.
We're okay with that one?
Okay, yep.
Great. We did have, uh, we just wanted to follow up on some other, um, the other options that we did talk about. Council did not want to support software or alternative. Council did not want to support software or alternative energy components as exemptions at this point. And then Mayor Brown, you had asked for additional research from neighboring cities of Denver, Green Village, and Inglewood regarding exemptions on diapers, feminine hygiene, and incontinence products. So we only found that Denver has that retail sales tax exemption, so council could still consider that. And then we are asking for just a couple of minor changes, and they were, these were proposed by Councilmember Holland and Mayor Pro Tem Wheel from March, and that's just to clean up 4410 on the dissolution of LLCs, to, to just exclude that from purchase or sale, and then 44210F, just to make sure services are exempt from taxation. So we just wanted to make sure that was in the definition.
And they already are, we just want to be very explicit about it, right?
Very explicit.
Consistent in the structure of the sentences, yep.
Okay, and if council does approve the first reading tonight, the second reading would be calendared for May 16th, along with the resolution that would approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Revenue to join SUTS. And with that is, here's the recommended motion to approve this council bill.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain an amended motion.
It might be an amendment, motion to amend first, and several motions.
A motion to approve.
Approve first and then amend.
Is that for you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then you take a motion and vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the primary motion.
Okay. All right, so who wants to start by making the...
The main motion.
Yep, okay, Randy's got it.
I move to approve Council Bill 3, Series 2023, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending Chapter 4, Article 4, concerning retail sales tax definitions and exemptions on first reading.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or perhaps amendments to the motion?
I move we exempt garage sales.
Do you wanna, can you be a little more specific and just refer to that section 3J?
3J.
Yes.
In section 3J, I move that we exempt garage sales in their entirety.
I, I think what, what might be helpful is an explicit motion to amend section 44210J to strike everything after the words shall be exempt from taxation, right?
Okay, can do that.
I'm pretty sure what I heard Randy say, to, to repeat the amendment, is to amend section 44210J to basically, to just read garage sales as defined in this article shall be exempt from taxation, period, and to strike the rest of the sentence. That has been, so Randy made that motion. Susan seconded it. We are now voting on the amendment to modify section 44210J to say garage sales as defined in this article shall be exempt from taxation, period. All in favor? Or do we need a voice vote for an amendment?
Roll call.
Let's do roll call.
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
That amendment passes, and now we're back to the original motion to... Where is it?
Approve Council Bill.
Yeah, I don't have the...
To approve Council Bill 3.
Oh, it's on there, yeah. To, we're back to the original motion to approve Council Bill 3, Series 2023, the bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending Chapter 4, Article 4, concerning retail tax, sales tax definitions and exemptions on first reading as amended. Roll call, please.
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. We, the next item of business is reports. The mayor's report, as you all know, I was at the Capitol all day today for another, for round two with Senate Bill 23213, but I did get there early in the morning, and the committee hearing was not until 2:30. So in the interim, I sat in on the Senate Appropriations Committee hearing, I don't have the bill number, but it is the proposed property tax relief bill. And I guess it doesn't really matter whether we support it or not, because it's probably gonna pass, but as I was saying to a few of you earlier, that the basic premise is that there will be a reduction in the residential assessment rate for primary residences, and I believe that the residential assessment rate for secondary homes will stay the same. If there is a reduction for secondary homes, it's not as great as the reduction for primary homes. You might ask yourself, how do they know what's a primary home and what's a secondary home? Every taxpayer has to file an affirmative statement stating that your property is your primary residence in order to qualify for the discount. And then you also get, I'm a little fuzzy on the details of this, there's a $40,000 tax credit that I believe everyone gets in the first year, perhaps the first two years, and then at some point it becomes conditional on...
It wouldn't be a tax credit, it'd be a valuation reduction.
It's a reduction in the valuation.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. It is a, it is a $40,000 reduction in the assessed valuation. That's correct.
I'd take a $40,000 credit.
And we, yes.
Irrespective of the value of the home?
Correct. Irrespective of the value of the home. All of this is predicated upon passage of a ballot initiative in November called Proposition HH, which would basically increase the amount of tabor, of revenue that the state is allowed to keep. Right now, it's like inflation plus 1% or something, and this would create an additional 1% that the state could keep above and beyond that. So basically, in order to get property tax relief, you have to agree, the voters have to agree to give up part of their tabor refund. Exactly. They're taking it from one pocket and putting it in the other.
Well, not just, not just that. They're also, which is not unlike what 213 is doing, they are setting this up for future. They are setting things up as precedent for future issues with regard to tabor. I mean, this, this is, this is a corrupt General Assembly in my view.
Well, let me, so let me say this, there is, there was one kind of interesting caveat to all of this. There's a, a time limit, I believe it's 10 years, and if at that point, the General Assembly opts not to continue these property tax reductions, then Proposition HH additional revenue goes away. So at least, you know, there's that, that if it isn't going to be used for property tax relief, then they're not gonna keep the money. It's not like they can keep it and then put it to something else for the future.
Does it, does it go back up?
I don't know, probably, because none of it goes, well, that's a good question, I'm not sure. And then the other part of this that, you know, so, so far as a resident and as a citizen of Colorado, I think many of us are like, huh. But that money that's collected will be used to backfill loss of revenue from local governments and school districts that rely on property tax, because by reducing the assessment rate and by reducing, making that $40,000 reduction, they're acknowledging that that is effectively taking money away from local governments and special districts and school districts, et cetera.
But it'll have very little impact on us, because everything you read, it keeps talking about for a $500,000 house.
Yes.
Which again, and that's, that's where their focus is, and of course, in Cherry Hills, it's not that, so it's not, it will have an impact on Cherry Creek School District because there's a whole bunch of places, so they, they would have the concern, but we probably wouldn't in that regard.
Won't, won't those special taxing districts, if the AV goes down, if the AV rate goes down, won't they just increase their mill levy?
Well, they have, there's a cap on, yeah, and there is a cap on how, how, how large a mill levy override you can even have.
There are a number of districts, fire districts and school districts, that attempt to pass that mill levy override, and it fails a year, it's...
Jeffco.
Douglas County, yeah.
Adams 14 hasn't, they passed one in 20 years, and they've asked, I think, 11 times, so, yeah.
So, you know, I, it's a little bit of a mixed bag, but I thought I would just bring you up to speed on that.
And I think, not unlike, not unlike our own sales tax resolution, a lot's gonna depend on how they're gonna be allowed to phrase that.
Yeah.
Because anything that comes close to going shall tabor, shall tabor not be, I mean, you know, it'll go down, I don't care what it says.
And so that, I, I think that's an interesting, you know, realization is, because I believe it will have to say, because it is a tabor override, and so it will have to have that language, and we know historically, those types of measures do not perform well in the state of Colorado. And so it is, it is actually quite possible that there's no property tax relief at all. Because if Proposition HH fails, then the bill doesn't go into effect and none of those things happen. So, well, right, until, until something else next year. So anyway, and then obviously, I would imagine the testimony on Senate Bill 213 is probably still going on in the House Committee, where I, I do feel like those, it will be amended to put preemption back in. Then it has to go to the House Appropriations Committee, then it has to go to the House floor for two readings, and it just is real, it's anybody's guess what, what will happen. There are people, there are people on both sides of the issue, that's the good news, whether they're, how many on, or are on each side is, you know, anybody's guess at this point. And all of that has to be wrapped up by midnight on Monday, the 8th. If the House, so the House will make, let's assume the House makes these amendments and they pass, then it goes back to the Senate. The Senate can either agree to those amendments, but if they don't, then it goes to a conference committee where they try to hash it out, and then the results from the conference committee have to go back to both houses, and all this has to happen in six days.
Oh, so it goes to the Senate floor first, and they can either, if they don't, then it'll go to Congress?
Correct.
That's good.
So, and...
We, we have been, we have been, a, a lot of the discussion has revolved around a lot of the Senate Democrats that we've talked about before. You know, I think the general approach, should you happen to run into somebody at the grocery store, one of those six people, you know, we are thanking them for their support thus far. It is a very positive, supportive message. So, you know, I, for whatever reason, if you communicate with those six folks, we are attempting to support and buttress their resolve to stand firm with what they've already done.
Well, let me, let me ask a question along those lines. I mean, should we, I, I did send Meg another love letter today, but, but should we, is there any action we should be taking or encouraging at this point?
So, I, I believe that, I do believe that our legislators need to hear from us. I believe that we should be encouraging people we know, I mean, there's no time to send out another letter, but, you know, please email your networks and your contacts. We cannot let them think that we've just lost interest. So, you know, I think, I think Meg certainly, Meg is supportive of, she sent an email out over the weekend saying that she supports transit-oriented development and ADUs, and so I think, you know, that'll probably be a done deal by tonight, and she probably will have voted for those amendments. And I believe that, you know, at that point, people should express their feelings about that. And then, you know, in terms of Senator Bridges, he has been instrumental up until this point, but I, I think we need to keep reminding him how important this is to us, and that, you know, we were all there in that room when he, you know, acknowledged that he didn't, he never directly said he didn't support any preemption, but it was pretty clear that that was our message, and so I think we need to be thankful and gracious and say, you know, we're really counting on you to hold the line.
And we can, we can do another social media post, as we've been doing throughout this process, reminding our residents of where we're at in, not where we're at, where they're at in this process and what residents can do to participate, which in this case is reaching out to our delegation. So we will do another one of those this week as well, so, well, not just this week, probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah, we need to do it tomorrow.
I would just like to add that that mail or the posting that goes out, that the transit-oriented piece of this is currently, I believe the language of the amendment is, we're still within a half mile, and it's as the crow flies. And Mayor, you were, I believe, at the meeting that night with the senators, you indicated how many houses that is in Cherry Hills that are affected and what the population could be. And, you know, I think people need to understand the context of while middle housing may be no longer included, this by no means is out of the woods for how it would impact Cherry Hills specifically. And I would like that information to be included in this type of, of notification to the public, because I think that frankly, it's causing, it, it's kind of gonna cause some, some hierarchy within Cherry Hills, that I don't think that we want to encourage at the city council level, that we're willing to sacrifice one part of the, of the village in, in the favor of the other. I think that CML, my understanding is gonna continue to oppose this as long as it's got the preemption in it.
Yes. CML is still opposed, Metro Mayor's Caucus is still opposed, there are even more organizations there, you know, testifying today, new organizations even that are opposed, so it's...
And I guess that, you know, if this absolutely goes forward, the one amendment that I think that I would like to encourage be made is that that half mile is not as the crow flies, but the intent of being within a half a mile in a TOD is so that you can walk, and it should be half a mile within walking distance. And given that you cannot walk from Cherry Hills within a half a mile and get to any of these zones, that would at least provide the comfort that for those sections of Cherry Hills currently impacted, that we're not selling them out, and I think that's important.
And I think there could be, there, there were some changes made to the bill that talk about measuring as walking distance. We are not clear, and this is gonna be, I totally agree with you that we should get this information out, the challenge is that the way it comes out, you know, you've seen the way those amendments come out, it takes, it's so difficult to really piece together, and a lot of times, what it ends up saying is actually not even really what they intended it to say, because of the way words are inserted. So it is my belief at this time that the intent of that language is to, to do that, but there is some real serious question that it doesn't actually do...
What they think it does. And we'll be checking with CML General Counsel to follow up on that, to make sure. If it turns out it doesn't say that, I think the best first step is to reach out to our delegation about that.
Yes.
But I've, but I've got further thoughts on it, at least these are mine, which is to go, and, and again, that's, that's what we'd want, and all of us and all councils represent their districts, except obviously not our statehouse representative. But the point is, is that any preemption of local control, I don't care whether it affects us or not, we need, my view is, we need to stand against that, because this is going to be a multi-year process of erosion, and the principle is that there shall be no preemption of local control.
of local control of zoning and home rule. That is really, in essence, the only thing that we do, we control our land and we police and secure our people. The rest of the stuff, it's important, but I mean, those are the things, and so my view is, is that, I agree with what Rob said 100%, but I mean, at the end of the day, it's still not enough in my view.
No, I, I completely agree, I do think that we need to, if something's going to pass, just in, in an effort to make sure we understand, and we are accurately communicating to our residents, you know, what the passage of this means, I, in no way am I saying, you know, we're just going to start advocating for these little nibbles here and there, but I do want to make sure that we understand, and, and I was, you know, told by Senator Bridges that he believed that that walking distance thing had been addressed, and so I believe that it was his intent that it had been addressed, and if it has not been, then we need to...
The last, well, the last, the last, the last time I saw, the last iteration I saw, there was mention of entrance and exit, but then it also had, in that same phrase, station, and so, you, you know, it was ambiguous, it wasn't specifically focused on half mile from the normal walking distance, or, or walking path, or, or roads, or any of that stuff.
So, the latest, the latest amendment that was going to be proposed in the committee tonight says, and the problem is that, you know, I don't have all the text above it to go back and see what it's referring to, but it says that you have to adopt local laws applicable to a zoning district covering areas outside of transit-oriented areas, so long as the zoning district is at least the same size as the eligible parcels in the transit-oriented area if, and so this is where you're saying it does sound like that, and you go down and it says, the subject jurisdiction, jurisdiction has established planning areas for transit-compatible use in adjacent areas, or utilizes alternate measurement methods for determining the extent of a transit-oriented area such as walking distance from transit stations, in determining the location of zoning districts for transit-oriented areas, a subject jurisdiction shall consider, oh, yeah, okay, that's, nevermind, but anyway...
That's, that's different and clearer than what I saw.
But, well, but Chris's point, Chris, you can say what you...
Yeah, I, I think we've got concerns...
I think I'm coming around to your point of view now.
Yeah, I think that they accidentally, or at least from Jeff's perspective, I should say, from Senator Bridges' perspective, I think the intent is to suggest that you can use other alternate measures or definitions like walking distance in an effort to, for applicability, but if you keep reading that section, it goes on to talk about the fact you then have flexibility with that required density, and you can put it in other places, and I think you could read it to say you have to put it in other places, so you're on the hook for that amount of density, you just don't, if you, if it's too far to walk, then you don't have to put it there, which doesn't help, and I don't think that Senator Bridges' intent, so we, just, just, I will just say, we don't need to solve for this tonight, we will be in contact with CML General Counsel on this issue, so, it could be that I'm reading it wrong.
Logically, it doesn't make sense, right?
No, it, it's, it's a giant logic hole, but remember, they are crafting this and taking out and adding on on the fly, minute by minute, and to keep track of cross-references, and how one section applies to seven other sections, and somebody's got to keep track of it all, it's a, it's a tough task, and so I think it is possible for things like this to have unintended applications.
And on that, just a note and a compliment to staff and to our city attorney, when you guys prepare amendments to our audiences, you don't do it the way that the State House does, and hopefully you never will, and I'm, that's actually serious, I mean, I, I've never seen anything done the way, it's ridiculous, and you know, these people don't, they don't know what's in the bill, reading normal language, much less the way that the amendments come out, and that says a lot about our governance and...
Even the bill sponsor couldn't answer pretty basic questions.
But anyway, kudos to, to staff.
I appreciate that, Earl, and, and we do try to take our time, and we have a lot of assistance from you guys.
And I just also want to mention that my understanding is that the similar land use bill did go down and was not enacted in any form in New York, where I just came back from.
Yes, that's true.
So.
Okay, so really, other than, I know we have some other things to discuss tonight, that's what I've been up to, let's start with the...
No report for me.
I don't have any report, although just one question, and I guess everybody by now has received their property evaluation, speaking of the tax thing, at the end of the day, and I don't know, Director Farman, if you've had an opportunity, because I know that they know now at this point in time, I mean, Rappahoe County could tell you and go, yeah, in general, Cherry Hills went up 38% or something like that, because everybody else is, all the other directors are talking about it.
It's like, no.
And so, I'd just be curious kind of where we are.
No, I think I was just waiting for the legislation to make a change, but we talked about the estimate at the Long Range Financial Forecast Session, and that was from January, but they had most of their field work done.
Right, yeah, just, just kind of up, because I think now it's...
I can, I can follow up, otherwise that, nothing else.
Okay, I'm having trouble tonight, my fingers are not working right, let me pick up on the last conversation, tomorrow, we have a, it was a work session, now it's converted to a special board meeting of the, of Dr. Cog, and the agenda, I mean, aside from approving the minutes of the last meeting, is all about Senate Bill 23, 213, you know, I, if I were going to cast a vote at this moment, it would be opposed, you know, and that's sort of based, well, it was based on the prior conversations we've had, and also the sentiment I'm feeling, but I should ask the question, so I represent the group accurately, I mean, I, and I, and I, okay, and I think, I think that is kind of true for either, the Senate bill was kind of, when the Senate had it, the 17 amendments, the only reason that bill was good was that the other one was so bad, it was, it was, it was only, only by comparison, that, and then the 17 amendments started putting it into a not-so-desirable place, and of course, if the House amendments with all of the preemptions reinserted, I think we're back to, there's just no way we can, we can feel good, but I should ask the question.
Let me just, because this is an interesting thing, okay, I mean, and you're right, the Senate bill, when it finally got through appropriations, there were things that we opposed, that CML opposed, but there's a difference, I mean, at least, again, this is my view, those things that they put in there, they have a right to put those in there, okay, that's, that's what they, hey, you guys need to be more regulatory, et cetera, that's things that they do, and we might not agree with it, or whatever, preemption is a whole nother thing, and so it's like, well, we opposed the first bill, and we still oppose this one, that's not accurate communication, it is, it is, it is a different thing going on there with regard to the preemptions versus how the Senate bill ended up, and I'm not saying we, but you see what I'm saying, I mean, it's a...
Well, but by tomorrow, it's going to be back to preemption anyway, and so we're back to, we're opposed no matter what.
Just looking for direction, asking a question, so, all right, okay, beyond that, Cherry Hills Farms had a homeowners' association meeting, the Bellevue Median was on the agenda, and where they are at the moment, a little bit tight budget-wise, but they're going to go to the residents and explore the opportunity for a special assessment to raise some funds to support that, so, and the one request that they had, when we did this before, Jay, I think you had a, a sheet that had the details of the cost breakdown from the quotes that we had, you know, how much on barricades, and how much on porta-pots, and labor, and yada, yada, do you have, do you still have that, because they were asking for that as a piece of information they'd like to have?
I will get that looked up and get it off into your email tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, yeah. No, 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 it's just the question of trying to get, they've had some unsolicited requests from residents saying, you know, this is really not a safe situation, so it's establishing a safe harbor there, so that, that was one item, they're also looking to redo the HOA rules, you know, which are sort of the, what, what, what the homeowners have to comply with, and I encourage them to think about referring to the city code wherever possible, so that they don't have to maintain it, because it's like a decade since they last looked at it, and was a decade before, and so on, so they were receptive to that, and I, I think, you know, Paul, we'll get together and perhaps we can start to give them a little help as to what areas overlap, and they can make an evaluation about whether that works for them or not. There were questions raised also about the flock camera system, and when that was going to be kind of laced together, and how many other communities were involved using that, that system, and maybe you could shed a little light on that, Chief, or, you know, if, if you need to pull something together, send me an email, but I, I told them I'd get back to them with that information.
Are you referring specifically to Cherry Hills Farms?
Well, Cherry Hills Farms has the, has the, or Farm, has the flock camera system in, and so they were, they were thinking that there were other communities, other residential areas, that were going to have cameras installed, and that that was going to start to build a network, and they were just looking to get a little bit of an understanding of, you know, who else, and how does this all, you know, all fit together, and what's the timing, and those kinds of things.
So, just in context, we have, there are six communities within the city that have cameras currently, today alone, we, Jay and I actually spoke to two other communities that are already moving forward on their own, and they'll allow connectivity with the police department, so that, that net is casting, the city-funded cameras, we have four, we had four in throughout the city, we had another three installed yesterday, there was a delay with a supply chain issue with the, the actual poles, but there were three more that went in yesterday, and then we have three more to go, that should be in the next few weeks for a total of, of 10 cameras, so that, that is, that net is casting, just on our four city cameras, we are averaging around, roughly around 100 hits a week, that's wanted people and vehicles, some of those are duplicates, right, so they, they pass through, some of them aren't actionable, some of them are where there's a stolen license plate, but it's, it belongs on the right vehicle, it's just the front plate that's stolen, but we're averaging around 100 a week, I, I think I shared with the manager, within the first two weeks of just those four cameras, it was like 168 hits, and now with those cameras, the other three going in yesterday, that's going to, it's going to increase exponentially, so...
That, that hits me as something that would be a pretty good thing for us to publicize to the community, you know, another step forward, safer community, all of that.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, they were coming through, they were coming through anyway, it's just now that we know.
Yeah, no, you're right, now we know they're coming through, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess I understand the point, though, okay, and then thanks again for all the good work on, on both the EVs and, and the sales tax, terrific stuff, great progress, that's all I have.
Counselor Sheldon?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, a couple things, we experienced a, a new thing happened in our neck of the woods on the east side of the village over the last few weeks, we had a housing displaced person end up sleeping on the porch of one of our neighbor, one of our neighbor's homes in Charleux, and roughly a week later, we found in, in small encampment of three, two or three tents located just on the other side of our city boundary, that boundary is the eastern wall of Charle, the Charleux neighborhood, it's got a eight-foot fence, a solid fence along that edge, don't know if the two incidents are connected, the fact that there was an encampment there, as well as the homeless person the week earlier coming, coming and sleeping on a front porch, but I, I do want to thank Chief Lyons and your officers, and your coordination with the Denver Police Department, and throw some props out to the Goldsmith Metropolitan District, who owns the ground in question where the encampment was, the collaboration of all those entities were able to go clean that area up and hopefully find adequate places for those folks to get to, so thank you, Chief, and the police department on that, also, I, I want to say thank you, I didn't really, I didn't really get a chance to say thanks for the update on the Police Foundation's donation to the police department as it relates to the vehicle disabling tire devices, I don't know what you're going to call, what we call them, but as you all know, that, that we had on the previous city council agenda, a couple weeks ago when I was not here, we had something on the agenda to talk about our chase, our police chase policy, and staff, I thank you for moving that, I think that's now on the schedule for two weeks from now, but I think what, what, what that donation was able to do in providing those, that equipment hopefully goes a little, you know, a little ways in maybe helping not let the bad guys get away scot-free, so that's, that's part of the discussion that we want to have, that I want to have in this discussion we'll have in two weeks about our chase policy, and then finally, regarding, regarding the assessed value and the county, I was disappointed, I called our assessor today, Rappahoe County Assessor's Office today, I was disappointed to see that this year we got a postcard, as opposed to an eight-and-a-half-by-11 envelope with a eight-and-a-half-by-11 piece of paper in it, that when you read your AV on the front, you can see how they came up with that calculation on the back with six columns, one with the subject property, and the other five with the comparable properties that they used, I had to call and request them to send that to me, which they did, within one minute after I made the request, I got an email from one of the folks working in the assessor's office, and she sent that to me, but I was disappointed that I had to call and ask for it, and I don't know if it's a money-saving measure for the county assessor's office not to send out the full US mail postage piece, or what it was, but the fact that I got this big giant increase like we all did, and I had to call to find out and try to understand how that increase was calculated and derived, I was a little disappointed in our assessor.
The, the one thing that, and I don't know if you noted, presumably you didn't, but on that postcard, it actually had a link where it said, if you want to see what you normally get, click on this link, put in your address, and it was right there.
So, maybe I'm not as internet web machine skilled as you are, but I looked, I looked for about 15 minutes on the assessor's website, I didn't look at the postcard to see where, maybe it had a direct address that would have taken me right there, I looked on their website for 15 minutes before I called the assessor, and could not find a link to see my comps, for whatever it's worth.
For us, we aren't getting anything from the assessor's office, we didn't get our tax statement, we didn't get our notice evaluation, we didn't get, we are not getting anything.
You didn't get that postcard?
No, we're not getting anything, the only reason...
Postcards arrived like late last week, I think?
Yeah, no, we, we didn't get anything, and, yeah, no, I mean, I, you know, I got a tax statement for our other property, and I was like, you know...
And, and just, and just in case anybody, because that actually, I mean, I'm actually the worst internet computer guy you're ever going to see, but I am pretty familiar with the assessor's website, because I've protested my taxes so many times over the years, when you click on the link, it takes you, and you know, it's that little thing on there, and you have to put in your, you just put in three, three Vista, you click on it, and then you go to the top, and right there at the top, it says 2022, 2023, you click on that, and there's, there's the sheet that normally they sent out, and I thought the same thing, I thought, why didn't they just send this, but it was all right there.
Okay, maybe you can show me sometime.
We ended up having to do the same thing.
My final, my final comment, Jay, just some, some shout-out to Public Works and Code Enforcement a little bit with regards to... with regards to the Denver Water Project at Quincy and Holly, keeping track of that and keeping them in check. Because it's been a really good, clean job site. I know we still have maybe 60 days to go or so before it's finished up. But it's been a, it's, it hasn't been nearly as big of an inconvenience as I think me and the neighbors on that end of town were expecting. So thanks for that.
I don't have much. I want to thank Emily, who's not here. So let her know I said thank you. We, I had a constituent who was unhappy that he was not able to find the, easily on the city website, the money that had been spent at Quincy Farm. And we now have it listed on the website, the money from each of the different funds that was spent in 2022. And I'm assuming we'll update that going forward, year by year. But the, my constituent was happy with that. And I want to thank Emily for getting that taken care of so quickly. And then I just had a question, City Manager, about the status of our tenant at Quincy Farm.
I, I, there's a, there, believe it or not, this is just the theme of 2023. It is a little complicated. For the most part, the, the tenant is out. There is remaining items. We're, we're attempting to effort and understand what that means. And so we're going to have to make some communication with the previous tenant about that. But big picture, it's good news.
And then that's, you're up anyway, so.
Yes, and we will, I will kick it over to Director Farman to let the directors provide any updates they may have.
Director Farman.
Yes, thank you. Just one note, we are going to have the audit report in front of council next month, so June 20th. And I know I mentioned how fun it was going to be, but it really wasn't that fun, so. But I think all in all, it should have pretty good results. And we're progressing on answering a lot of phone calls and emails about sales tax application and accounts and things like that. So imagine that's going to ramp up once the city joins us next month. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Workman.
A lot of time and resources, as you all know, is being spent on Senate Bill 213. So that is taking quite a bit of our time, as, as it should, rightfully so. Just to let council know, we did finish our CRS audit last week, provided them with the necessary paperwork. Usually takes them 60 to 90 days to let us know how we did. We have no reason to believe that there's anything that would come back as we did things last year the way we've always done them. But once we get those results, we'll certainly let you know. That's it for me.
Chief Lyons.
Good evening again. Just a few things from the Police Department. First, as you know, in January, I rolled out a new statistically-driven monthly report. The intent was to provide through data patterns and trends around rates of crime and activity within the city. It's, my understanding that those reports may have fallen a little short on council expectations. So this month, May, you will see a more robust report with the same statistical data, but also maybe more of a summary of the ongoings within the organization, some accomplishments, just department business, those kinds of things. The idea behind that, of course, was to collect data starting in January. Historical data was derived from handwritten reports on paper given to a clerk who compiled that information day after day after day. And, and what I discovered was that that data was manipulated through a lot of different filters, not necessarily with nefarious intent, just in terms of human error and understanding how, how crime should be reported and some redundancies around that. So I'm going to ask for your patience to give me some time to really get to apples-to-apples. And to do that, I have to have probably a year's worth of data. We are currently collecting crime data through, through an analytical software program that marries to our CAD dispatch and records management system so that there is no manipulation of that data. The calls for service are what they are. The crimes reported are what they are. But it will take a year to collect that data so that we can move forward, really with an apples-to-apples comparison. Secondly, just to kind of touch on staffing, I mentioned that quite a bit. We are, I'm happy to say that we are, well, May 15th, we'll be staffed to 100% of our authorized strength. We have two very experienced officers who, who are coming to us on May 15th. And that will put us fully staffed, perhaps for just a few weeks. As, as you know, perhaps know, I'm happy to report that we are engaged in very serious conversations with Kent Denver, who has asked for increase in police service. And they intend to contract with the Police Department for a full-time school resource officer. That, those conversations are advancing. There are some agreements in principle and working through some contract language with our, with Kathy's office to kind of get that moving. So that would be effective the 1st of July, just when our, our current contract with Kent ends. Excuse me. And as part of that staffing adjustment that occurred in January, I'm happy to report that as, as there's some additional officers that have, that became available when we moved to 12-hour shifts, we will be standing up our first-ever full-time traffic unit. Those officers will not only increase enforcement and education in the areas that are, are high-frequency crash locations, but really citywide, as well as handling complaints within the community from our, from our citizens. I would, I would venture to say that those don't get the attention that they deserve simply because of the nature of patrol work and that your officers are going from call to call. But they will be entrusted with handling those complaint areas, putting an action plan in place, and then responding back to those residents on their concerns. So you will see an increased presence around traffic enforcement and education. And then lastly, as of yesterday, the Police Department has stood up its Facebook page. There's not much on there yet. It is a work in progress, but that is a vehicle for us to communicate directly with the public around things like locking your car doors and, on community events and, and accomplishments within the organization. We really endeavor to connect to a greater degree with, with our community. And this is one way to do that. And that, that platform will be built over the next few weeks and advertised in a variety of ways, but really to increase followership. So look forward to, to reporting back to you as, as to how that might go. We shall see. That's it for the Police Department.
Chief, just one thing, I just wanted to say that, and this is just anecdotal, statistically not valid, but I think your new staffing plan, at least from my perspective anecdotally, is working. Because I, 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 I see the police on the road every time I go out, no matter where I go. And either that or they're chasing me.
They're following you.
They're following me. But again, I mean, you know, and it's just anecdotal, but it really seems to be, the presence really seems to be up substantially. So congratulations so far on that, that plan.
I would reiterate that. It's very visible. Is that Jay over there?
Yep. I'd like to report that I'm not at 100% staffing. I wish I was. We're down about three in Public Works right now, two in parks and one in streets. So we are in the process of hiring more people. It's the same problem everybody has right now, keeping staff. We closed today the RFP for the real estate broker for 90 Mead Lane. We ended up with four proposals. So I thought that was pretty good. And so counsel, is there anyone on council that wants to see those? And, okay. I, I can get all those proposals to you. And so we're, we're looking forward to bringing someone on board, hopefully through those proposals. I haven't looked at them. Today was the closing at 4:00, so I will get those packets out to the three counselors that raised their hand. That's it.
Yeah, send them to everybody.
Okay, don't send them to me. Send them to everybody.
Yeah, I do have them all electronically. So I will send them electronically. If you want paper copies, let me know. I have those too, but I can send them electronically just as easy. I can send paper or electronic, either one.
Electronic.
Okay.
Okay.
Laura. You, you've heard from me a lot over the past few weeks, so I'm not going to get into a lot of operational items with you tonight. But I do want to take a moment to talk briefly, just to do a quick check-in with council, to make sure you are understanding everything that is, is happening with our staff. I think I've mentioned this to council a few times. I know I've mentioned it to my staff a number of times. I talked a big game. Last year, we had a lot going on, a lot of big, huge Herculean efforts with zoning codes and, and 2A and all these other things. And I kept telling everybody, you know, we'll return back to more of a normal year in 2023. You know, in an effort to make sure everybody knows this is not our new normal. And then 2023 had different plans for us, whether that's House Bill 213 or the changes in framework for the High Line or whatever. We've had a number of unplanned, high-profile, intensive projects, all while we're, while we are still doing our regular job. And tonight, I think, is a great illustration of that. And, you know, I think, Jay, I, I have, I have independently heard about the Holly project, the Denver Water Project going extremely well. Every time I anecdotally drive by, I mean, it's shocking how in shape that project looks. And your staff and Ryan should be commended for that. You know, Paul is really working together with me mostly on this House Bill 213 stuff. Yet this month, he completed the CRS audit process. All, you know, his day job, basically, while we're sort of jointly handling a lot of the support for you on 213. Doug was able to successfully, we're getting, I know we've got more to come, but we're through phase one, or at least the first reading of phase one here. So I just, I just, I think it's important for council to understand where we're at this year and kind of the impacts that we're doing in a climate where retention is challenging. We've heard it all along. And I certainly want to thank Cherry Hills Village employees for really what's amounted to a really challenging year, an unexpected challenging year. And they have come through like champs. So hats off to our entire team. And that's the only report I have.
Thank you. And I'm sure we all agree and appreciate our staff if we don't say it enough. Okay. I guess that concludes most of our business. We have an executive session.
I move to go to, into executive session under executive session pursuant to CRS. Sections 246402, 4B, and 246402, 4E, for the purposes of receiving legal advice on special, on specific legal questions and determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding the contents of a letter from Colorado Open Lands to the city regarding the conservation Eastman on the property known as Quincy Farm. I further move to adjourn the city council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Take the roll, please. Counselor Eber.
Hi.
Counselor Holland.
Hi.
Counselor Will.
Hi.
Counselor Sheldon.
Aye.
Counselor McGuire.
Aye.
That passes and we'll move into executive session.